This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls off. Assistant City Clerk, what's your name?
Jenny Shaver.
Thank you. Jenny Shaver with a roll call.
Councilman Harris.
Here.
Councilman Williams.
Here.
Avery.
Here.
Eccles.
Here.
Stewart.
Here.
Cannon.
Here.
And Reed.
Here.
We have a quorum present and the meeting is open for business. Jeremy Ward will bring us our invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Father, we praise you for the beauty of your creation and what we see today. God, we pray that as we go through this meeting that you give our leaders wisdom. That you give them the ability to make good decisions, to glorify you with their actions, and to uplift our city. Lord, we pray for those that are still going through the storm issues, God, that you would continue with them and give them the ability to recover. And help us as a city to be that light that helps them do that. In thy name we pray.
Amen.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All Ego.
Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session in council meeting on May the 24th.
So moved.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of May the 20th through the 26th.
So moved.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Proclamation, Mayor.
First of all, I'd like to ask, is Ms. Sophia Holston here today? Oh, okay. Come on up, please. I have a proclamation for Ms. Sophia Holston. Whereas Ms. Sophia Tiny Holston will celebrate her 94th birthday on June the 3rd, 2011. She was born to Willie and Dixie Thomas and his youngest of eight children in Asheville, Alabama. Ms. Holston later moved to Gadsden, Alabama, where she met and married Plume Holston on March 7th, 1950. Ms. Holston has four children, 15 grandchildren, 26 great-grandchildren, and 13 great-great-grandchildren. She worked for Gadsden State Community College and Quality of Life. She was a member of the NAACP and owner of the Eastern Star and a volunteer at Baptist Memorial Hospital. She is also a member of First Baptist Church of East Gadsden, where she's been involved with the junior choir and the junior usher board. Ms. Holston has received several awards, such as Certificate of Appreciation from Gadsden State Community College in 1989, the NAACP Distinguished Service Award in 1991. This was a joint award for Mr. and Mrs. Holston. The NAACP Service Award for her loyal and distinguished service as Recording Secretary in 1997, or the Eastern Star Materials Certificate for Distinguished Service and Personal Contributions in 1998, the Quality of Life Health Services presented her with the Recognition of Excellence Award in 2000 for Service and Devotion and Essential Peace, second quarter in 2008. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Sherman Gotten, Mayor of the City of Gadsden, to hereby proclaim June the 3rd, 2011, as Miss Sophia Tiny Holston Day in the City of Gadsden.
I'd just like to say thank you to Mayor Gotten and to the council and to the City of Gadsden. Thank you.
I thought we had a parrot head. And, oh, there it is. Come on up, Ms. Parrot Head. What a good day for the air to be off. We had three that sort of got a little weak-kneed at the Patriots Memorial Day yesterday. The color guard, one laid down and they escorted two off. It was really hot, but it's okay. Whereas Jimmy Buffett was born in Pasca-Gorda, Mississippi, in 1946, and grew up in Mobile and Fairhope, Alabama, and in his lifetime has achieved great success as a singer, songwriter, recording artist, and businessman. Jimmy Buffett is known as an outstanding writer of both fiction and nonfiction, including the number-one bestseller Tales from Margaritaville, which spent more than seven months on the New York Times Bestseller List for fiction. The book A Pirate Looks at Fifty went straight to number one on the New York Times Bestseller Nonfiction List, making Jimmy Buffett one of only eight authors who have achieved this honor in both the fiction and nonfiction categories. Our community reading program, Gadsden Reads, has selected Jimmy Buffett's Tales from Margaritaville as its 2011 project and has had many unique events throughout the duration of the project and has had many unique events involving parrot heads, as Buffett's fans are known throughout the world. Therefore, be it resolved, I, Sherman Gotten, Mayor of the City of Gadsden, to hereby proclaim June 3rd, 2011, as Jimmy Buffett Parrot Head Day in Gadsden, Alabama, and I'll urge all citizens to join Gadsden Reads 2011 in the celebration at Mark Glosser Amphitheater at 8:00 PM, featuring an official Jimmy Buffett-endorsed tribute band.
Is that a talking parrot?
You know, sometimes people think I'm crazy, but you have to do what you have to do to make Gadsden a success, and this is what I have to do. So, I'll blame this on Tammy Brooks from Imagination Place. This has been a great conglomeration, Parks and Rec, Tourism, Imagination Place, the library, and we're gonna have a great time. It's also First Friday, so if I'll stick around and maybe talk a little bit about that, if you'll let me in just a minute. But I want Carrie to say something real quick about the amp.
As you know, we did the summer, or the music in May. We just wrapped it up this past weekend. We had local entertainment perform in May. It was a very huge success. We, I've seen some of you folks up here at the concerts, and, but we had a real good time. And then our first summer concert will kick off this Friday night, as Kay said, and it'll be at 9:00 to 11:00. I think the mayor said 8:00, and that may be what we had on some of the printed stuff. But anyway, it's from 9:00 to 11:00 after First Friday ends. Come to the amphitheater. We're starting to utilize it more. We're starting to get more interest in it. It's because we're doing things to get people out to see that it is a unique venue. So, we invite you out. We'll be having concerts June, July, August, September, and October. We'll have five summer concerts. This group here is out of Atlanta, and it's Jimmy Buffett endorsed, so we're expecting a full house on Friday night. So, we just, we appreciate the council allowing us to do events like this and hope to see you out there Friday night.
Actually Friday.
Actually Friday, but the party?
Party's Saturday.
It's Saturday, okay. I just want to be sure. I know she's been a stellar person in the community, done quite a bit of everything. I guess, I don't know of anything she hadn't volunteered to do. I'm just happy to see you back in town.
No, thank you.
I haven't seen you in a bunch of years, too.
Slipping and out.
You're slipping everywhere now, and, okay. But anyway, that's a great musician there. Maybe, maybe you can play with the band Saturday night if you're gonna be around.
I'll next.
Okay, all right.
Okay, number eight, Unfinished Business. Is an ordinance amending City Code Section 130 to 357 regarding removal of signs at fireworks sales locations. This ordinance was presented last week for the first reading. It would require signs related to firework business be removed within three days of the end of each firework session. Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. President, I know we've discussed this and talked about it. I just hope that the building department or inspectors or whoever have talked to the owners of those firework stands and that they understand that that also mean that those firework stands will have to be covered up or painted or whatever the case may be. I just want to make sure that they've made that contact, because this include all of those signs.
Is there any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
All those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Nine through 11, Resolution Authorizing Memorandum of Understanding Between Gadsden, Edgewall County EMA, and the Cities of Hoaks Bluff, Rainbow City, and Southside. These agreements are for the use of certain facilities in the municipalities for staging and distribution of resources or a reception or relocation of evacuees in the event of a disaster or emergency incident, or training for such an incident. Chair will entertain a motion to adopt all three of these resolutions.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
All those in favor to adopt all three resolutions, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
First reading, An Ordinance Authorizing Conveyance of Certain Property to Habitat of Humanity. This is for lots 11, 14, and 18 of Adams Park subdivision for the construction of new homes to qualify low and moderate income persons. Next is an ordinance repealing City Code, and I think somebody was gonna bring that up. Didn't you say she wanted that today?
Oh, she said she wanted that today, okay.
Yeah.
Mr. President, I'd ask that we, I ask for unanimous consent to consider the Habitat ordinance.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
All those in favor to consider the ordinance as new business today, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, permission is granted.
Ask for a motion to approve.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah, they, they're applying for a grant for funding to, to help build these houses, and one of the preconditions is that you have to have ownership of the property in order to apply for those funding. So, clear title on that. So, that's what this is all about.
Is there any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
All those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Thirteen is an ordinance repealing City Code Section 649, which would remove location restrictions for the selling of alcoholic beverages on on-premises consumption. These two ordinance have been presented today while the first ones passed, but the first reading and the council will vote on them next week. Is there any new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have a couple items here. First, there's a Resolution Authorizing Agreement with CDG Engineers and Associates. I'd like to make a motion that we consider this today.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution as new business today, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, permission is granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, sir. This is regarding construction of the Black Creek Trail from Nakalula Falls Park to Megan Boulevard. This is, this is, again, an agreement with, with CDG Engineering to, to manage all of the project management activity and construction activity for this, for this project.
Is there any other discussion?
All those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
I have a couple more items here, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion that we consider today Resolution Authorizing Agreement with Norfolk Southern Railway Company for construction of a crossing parallel to Black Creek Road with, with the city contributing 12,000, I'm sorry, with the city contributing 15,000 to it and receiving a total of 12,000 as an incentive.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution as new business today, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, permission is granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any more discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
All those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
The final item that I have, Mr. President, is a, an ordinance amending the budget for fiscal year 2011. This is to set aside monies for our summer youth employment program. Make a motion that we consider that today.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance as new business today, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, permission is granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. This, again, as I mentioned on, on last week, this is city government at its best. This is us responding to a need in our communities. The only item that the council has been forced to vote on has been the budgetary item. There will be 18 jobs associated with the pilot youth jobs program that, that the city is looking at this, this year. The other 40 jobs, for a grand total of 58, I believe, will come through the, the normal scope of our seasonal hiring. So, this is a, a good opportunity for us and a, and a good move on the part of the city. So, I do want to thank the mayor and the council for making this happen.
Yes, Mr. President, I'd just like to tell you where those 18 students are gonna work this summer. Seven students will work in the Parks and Recreation Department. Six students will work in Public Works. Two students will work in Fleet Maintenance as auto mechanic helpers. One student will work with our Building Department Electrical Department. One student will work with the Building Maintenance, Heating and Air Department, and one student will work in the library. And you can see here, there's about four students that's coming out of the career tech. Two of them is auto mechanics, one is an electrical department, one is heating and cooling, and that just goes to show you that those kids down there are learning something. When they get up here with our guys, maybe they'll be able to find out a little bit more about what they're wanting to do.
Heating and air can get you going.
I hope somebody can.
Yeah, we could've used them today.
What we need to do is amend this to make sure that all of them work in that department until we get this air back on.
This is a pilot program that, and we hope that next year it'll grow and expand, but this is the, a good start, I think, in this program.
And also, too, I might add that the students that we got here, they had to have a C average. They couldn't got any trouble during the school year. And so, all these kids are really good kids, and so that might make some of the other kids realize when they go back to school next year, they might try to want to do right, you know, so they can see themselves come next year and work for us during the summer. It's a six-week program. Is there any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
All those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Any other new business? Department reports, committees, you made yours and you want to make it again.
Ain't got any more to talk about.
Please let me finish my remarks for one minute.
Thank you, Mr. President. If you want to cool off, Sixth Street Pool opened today. That's one of the announcements I wanted to make.
Good.
It opened at 10:00 this morning, be open till 5:00. So, if you got a dollar, you can go over there and swim all day and, and cool off till they get our air fixed. The community centers, the three that we're gonna open on Saturdays, we'll, we'll start that this Saturday, East Gadsden, Walnut Park, and Carver, they'll be open from 10:00 to 2:00. I've already had one inquiry about a reservation for some practice and that sort of thing, so, and, and also a phone call last week about reserving it for something with youth. So, just make sure you use the facilities. They'll be open from 10:00 to 2:00. We'll have a sign-up sheet, and we'll probably try this the whole summer long. So, we'll give it, you know, the two and a half months or so to see how people respond to it during the summer months. Also, our summer camps at Carver and Mitchell Community Centers will start tomorrow. They may already be full, I'm not sure, but you can call either center if you've got kids that are interested. It's real affordable. They, it's an eight-week program that they, they do different things with the kids. They may even take them on a few field trips that, this summer as well, and I know they do some activities here in the city. The other thing that we have, and I'll pass this and let Jenny pass it around to you, is this weekend's our fourth annual Coosa Land and Super Invitational Bass Tournament. So, you know, this is something that the mayor started here four years ago. It's been a very huge success. We've, we've had over 100 boats every time that we've had the tournament. We pay out like $9,000 in prize money, and I think that's why we have a lot of interest in it. We have some people that'll come stay in the hotels and stay for a few days, and then we have some local folks that want to try to win the prize money as well. But that'll be this weekend here at Coosa Land, and I'm not sure of the way-in. It's either 2:00 or 3:00, but the way-in, they come in every 15 minutes. You'll have 15 or so fishermen come in to weigh in. On Saturday, we feed them, all of them that enter. I think it's a $150 entry fee. We'll feed them when they come in off the river on Saturday, then on Sunday, we will give out the prize money as well, as we have some door prizes that we give away as well. So, it's been a very huge success, and I'm starting to sweat, so I'm gonna wrap it up. Thank you.
Thank you.
I may not talk for a minute. Carrie took way longer than I thought. Thank you, Council President, Council. Mr. Mayor, thank you for the proclamation. This Friday is First Friday. June 3rd is First Friday, and we're gonna kick it off at noon. Jim Connor, who you may remember is part of our song cycle for the Alabama, Year of Alabama Music, for Alabama Tourism. He will be, he'll have a lunch meeting on Friday at noon to talk, just talk to us and kind of let us listen to his things, and then he's gonna kick off, he's gonna sing for about an hour from 6:00 to 7:00 in front of the Center for Cultural Arts. And then Caribbean Crumb, who is our steel drum band, will be here. They're from Jacksonville. They'll be here to play. Damascus Road will be there. Mr. Michael's Petty Thieves, and of course, the big wrap-up at, at the amp, as Hugh from Tourism has named that now. That's our new logo and our new sound. We've got a great, a great logo for that, thanks to Hugh. So, we're looking for a good time. It's gonna be hot. So, I, I'd like to take this opportunity to say, you know, people have been bringing pets to First Friday. I would suggest you don't do that this month or for the summer months primarily. There's no, this is not really a pet-friendly area. It's gonna be hot, and there's really not any area for that. So, I know some people consider their pets children, but if you could not do that, I think you'll, the pet and, and everyone else will be better. So, we're looking for a great night. A lot of classic cars gonna be here from all over the southeast. We are very proud in downtown to have this as one of the prime, primary events in Alabama every month. So, thanks to the city, thanks to Public Works who come in and do a great job getting us ready and then cleaning us up after. You can drive through on Saturday morning and never knew anything happened on Friday night. Thanks to the Gadsden City Police Department, the Edgewall County Sheriff's deputies to keep it a safe place. Thanks to all of y'all for supporting it. I appreciate that, and there's not many people I would do this for right here, but please, please come out and have a good time, talk it up. We're gonna have a great time from 6:00 to 11:00, and they say there's nothing to do in Gadsden. They're crazy. So, thank you very much. Thank you.
Hey, I just did want to comment on how, how much gumption it took to address the issue of pets as you're dressed up like a parrot.
As y'all know, tornado occurred on the 27th, and the winds that occurred that morning affected mostly in the county. But as a city department which responds throughout the county, I wanted to give y'all an update where we are right now as far as recovery in the county. We had eight homes that were completely destroyed out in what is known as the Happy Hollow area in extreme southeastern corner of Edgewall County, an area that not people even, most people didn't even know existed. But they have about 15 homes out there, and they lost eight of them in this, in this event. We have two others in that area that are probably going to be condemned, just waiting on their insurance to make that determination. In that same area and along Ford Valley Road, we had five to eight that received moderate damage that would require extensive repairs. And then we had 20-plus homes throughout the county that received some damage, mostly just minor from tree falling and so forth. Our FEMA community relations team is made up of Angel, Cecilia, he's from Puerto Rico, Paul Williams, who's from Arkansas, Lori Lawton, who's from Charleston, South Carolina, and Mona Grubb, who was from FEMA headquarters. This group has worked closely with EMA and has been an invaluable resource for us. When we'd run up on snags trying to get assistance for these people, all they were just a phone call away, and usually it happened. And they, I really do want to commend them for what they've done. They're still with us and will be here probably for another week or so. There's some 300-odd applicants in, in the county, and they have to just almost have personal contact with each one of them before they're through. The FEMA Disaster Recovery Center is still open over at the Robert Eccles Building, and they are operating on a seven-day, 7:00 in the morning till 7:00 at night schedule right now, but it will close this Saturday. So, if you know of anyone who has not had their issues resolved with FEMA by phone, encourage them to go to the DRC, which is over at the Family Success Center. Of course, you know, DHR put on their food voucher program back week four last. It's very successful. We thought it was gonna be a traffic nightmare, but Lieutenant Moon and the police department worked closely with us, and we managed to maintain the traffic. It really went fairly well. They handed out some 8,000 food vouchers during that five-day event, so that was, that was pretty impressive. Community relations and response, I can't thank and commend our departments, both in the city and in the county. The many fire departments, police departments, the sheriff's office, public works, they all contributed responding out of our county into areas that were hit far harder than we were, and they did an excellent job. Just so you'll know, they will probably be reimbursed for their, for their expenses, and that's a good thing. FEMA will pay part of that reimbursement. Debris removal is ongoing. We still have a lot of debris out there that's, has to be picked up. The last report I got was about two weeks ago, and it was in excess of 6,000 cubic yards, and, and we were just barely hit. I mean, we were, I did hear a report the other day that if all the debris from this storm was collected into one place, it filled Bryant-Denny Stadium to a height of nine miles. So, you can kind of understand what the state is facing in removing all of this debris from these storms. There were 54 tornadoes on the ground at one time in the state of Alabama on April 27th. That's, that's highly unusual. Hopefully, the season's over. I'm not gonna predict that like James Spann did, but hopefully, that's the worst of what we'll receive this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other new business? I mean, department reports? Okay, it's the mayor and the council. You want to start, Ben?
Sure. Reminder, Mike, you were talking about that stadium down there, nine miles high. Brings to mind about where in the world you're gonna put all that stuff. I think we ought to be looking into kind of resurrecting that idea of an incinerator, because it'll do away with every bit of it, zero emissions, and you don't have to throw it at the table. But it was, would've been a good idea.
Give it to them enough power.
12 years ago, yeah.
Or Redstone.
Produced power. I don't usually do this, but I'm going to again. Like I say every week, I'm not gonna do this, but I always do. I want to thank Ty Jackson and his group, especially Randy Gladon and that Weed Eater group. I think we had some machinery go down, and that Weed Eater group, Mayor, got out there and did that work. and did that work, all the way up Baker Street and all that thing. I like to fellow, I saw those guys out there with those Weed Eaters doing the job of a sidearm, this sort of thing, but they did a beautiful job, and I do want to know that I appreciate it. From the Gadsden Edgewall Patriots Association, those who came to Memorial Day yesterday, absolutely one of the best programs I've seen in a long, long time. It's hard to tell people the feeling that you get when that group of people gets together, military people, and they're memorializing the war dead. And let me say that not one of them is going to be forgotten as long as there's one patriot or one of us left. I can guarantee you that. But a special tribute was made to Major Jeffrey O. Osburn of Hoaks Bluff, who was killed in Afghanistan, and I think y'all all remember that story. But when that P-51 rolled over at about 10,000 feet and came down over that audience, it was a feeling that probably you're not going to forget. Or if you do forget, you're not allowed to start with, so that there's a problem there. But it was absolutely, he made three passes, and then he went back to the airport. But quickly, I do want to say, and Mayor, you were there, those fire medics, if they hadn't been there, what in the world would we have done with those JROTC students that fell out? I mean, they were on the ball, they iced them down, and they got it done. The police force was there to direct the traffic. Colonel Harrison, my goodness, what are you going to say about Carl Harrison? Colonel Harrison, his RJOTC program, doing the colors, he's there. Did you notice that in your uniform he was in?
I did.
Billy, you'd appreciate that, son. He was in Class A Army gear.
All right.
He's sharp anyway. I like that dude, but he was dressed fit to kill. And then, the youth orchestra from East Gadsden Bank was there. I borrowed so much money from those people, it just automatically comes out.
They don't even exist anymore.
It is a Baptist church. Clark, I'm sorry, I messed that one up, but East Gadsden Baptist Church. Chaplain Larry Wright did a beautiful job. Gary McBride on those pipes, he comes across every time. But anyway, from the Gadsden Edgewall Patriots Association, thank you to the people who came. If you didn't come, come on out next year, because it gets better every year. Thank you.
Mayor?
I'll just follow up on what Ben said about the Patriots yesterday. That was really great. I believe that's the biggest crowd you had since I've been going around. And we just always need to keep that in mind. I don't know how much the kids get in school about patriotism and civics and all that. I hope they still do a lot. I know we had a lot of that when I was in school. I probably didn't pay much to civic, attention to civics, but I should have. If I'd known I was going to have this job, I'd have listened a lot more.
It would've helped.
But, yeah. And also, to follow up what Mike said about our employees, a lot of them volunteer when we work down in Oatchee and then out in Happy Hollow, I mean, Silver Lakes out in that area out there, it's, we're just real fortunate that we're where we are, and we need to keep that in mind. Thanks.
Yeah, I just want to say, I talked with Councilman Reed this morning about our flags upon Megan Boulevard we put up. He did inform me that they're going to try to buy some new flags and going to try to paint those posts, will maybe look a little bit better. Some of them was in dire need of replacement. He said they're going, the Patriots Association's going to work on that. I really do appreciate him for doing that. That's all I got.
Billy?
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess I should have, you know, I spoke a long time last Tuesday, but I guess I should have said this about Memorial Day that we celebrated on yesterday. I was in a ceremony on Sunday afternoon, and I didn't make the Patriots Day program yesterday, and I really, I do have regrets about not making it. But as long as there's one of us veterans still alive, all those veterans that gave their lives, all those military men and people that gave their lives for us will never be forgotten. Yesterday, there's a national movement on, and I wanted to encourage people to do it, but yesterday at 3:00, it was suggested that everybody take one minute out and give thanks for those soldiers who have gone on for our sake. Now, I must tell you, I went on the computer and I found taps, and I played taps at 3:00, and I tell you, it was a sobering, sobering, sobering event. And I stopped at one moment, and we should all be thankful and never forget those soldiers who have gone on for us. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple things from me. Just did want to, again, reiterate, as it relates to our summer youth jobs program, it looks like the start date for that program's going to be the 24th of June, and it'll run through August 6th. So, for those who are interested in those dates. And I wanted to highlight that those jobs, the 18 in particular that were a part of the pilot, were selected randomly. So, and I think it's important to note that because it kind of takes some of the, some of the personal aspect out of people being cherry-picked from a list of applications. The random selection pretty much levels the playing field for anybody that meets the minimum qualification. So, for me, that was a big item, and I was glad to see that take place. The only other thing I have is the basket. When I, there was a time in the city, you know, we've talked about today, the extended hours for three of our community centers. And there was a time, this is for Carrie, there was a time when we had a basketball circuit, and I know we didn't call it that officially, but there was a basketball circuit. A lot of some, many of the better basketball players in the city would designate a community center to play in the afternoons. Typically, it was, you know, one on a Monday, and each day of the week had its, had its time and its location. But back then, it never had any formalized shape, or it didn't take on any formalized structure. It was more or less the young men in the community coming together and making that happen. I'd like to see Parks and Rec, and this is more of a suggestion on my part, but I'd like to see Parks and Rec kind of get behind that and maybe help to drive and help to formalize that. And I'm not talking about money. I'm not talking about a whole lot of time, just something to help drive. And I remember that being a source of keeping young men off the street, keeping young men out of trouble. So, I'd like for us to take a look at that, Carrie. Just take a look at that and see if there's something we can do from a city standpoint to help formalize that. You know, that's something that won't cost us anything, but we may realize a tremendous benefit from it. So, that's all I have.
Just a couple of things. You might have recognized that we're not dressed quite the way we usually normally dress, except for Ben. He didn't get the word, the air conditioning's been off here today, so we're all cooled down as much as we can.
I've got a moldered shirt.
I would like to ask you to be in prayer for my sister-in-law, Judge Donald Stewart's wife, Brenda, had a stroke Saturday, a week ago, and she's been in a non-responsive coma since then. And just say a prayer for Brenda, if you would. We're all concerned. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a couple of things. Number one, Ms. Harris was upstairs earlier today talking about the grass situation in our area. We really have a backlog, and of course, John was telling us he was a couple of weeks behind. That's easy to talk about and easy to say, but when you face your constituents about the grass cutting and tell them it's behind, they don't understand that. So, hopefully, if they'll be patient, we'll get around to getting most of that grass caught up and get it cut. The other thing is, and I didn't get a chance to talk about it upstairs, the mayor didn't come in, but Mayor, I got another call from one of my constituents, pretty much threatening me, but that was okay. We've got a situation when it comes down to drainage, and of course, I understand this situation, and I understand the frustration. And this is basically around Penny Street, 10th Street, Avenue EF, and that area. And I think, I was not here today, but we've been working on getting some right-of-way over on the other side between Rogers and Ninth Street, so we can deal with that flooding over there. But he told me if I didn't say anything about it, I don't know what he's going to do. So, I just want to make sure he's watching TV today and I'm saying it, so he don't come over to my house, because he pretty much just threatened me about that. So, anything you can do to help me on that, I would appreciate it. I understand you don't care about me, but if you could help me on that, I would appreciate it.
I know some of the areas you're talking about, the city engineer, Chad, he's been trying to put some money aside before we can do a couple, because some of that's going to be a big project.
A lot of it's going to be a big project.
He's trying to keep, get some money piled up, you know, to, before he might can do some work on that. On the grass stuff, too, I think in his next budget, I've been thinking about that, maybe we need to put a little more money in the budget to have some other crews cutting besides just what we've had, you know. For originally, we couldn't afford it, but maybe we might could do that now to get it a little faster. I would like to ask everybody, too, if you, in your house, in your front yard, if you have a sidewalk and in the, about a three-foot space, that's, according to the city ordinance, that's up to you to cut that, you know? We can get some of the other places, but it's up to them to cut that if they can. So, try to keep that in mind. I hate to say, a real nice manicured lawn, and they lift two feet high on the right-of-way.
Well, most people say, you know, it's the city's right-of-way, which it is, but I mean, it only takes a couple of minutes more to get out there and cut that.
That's true.
To make it look good, that would help the city out. Where we have problems is where there is no sidewalks and all those things. It's just a major problem keeping that up. But I appreciate you coming to my rescue. You're telling us we're going to put more money in to cut grass. You're telling me you're going to put money aside for drainage, and so, hopefully, my constituents will be happy with you. Thank you.
We'd rather do that than have to pay hospital bills.
I appreciate you.
Now, that applies to alleys, too, right? Alleyways.
Alleyways. That's all I have.
Mr. President, I'd like to ask Ben, that crew that you saw with the Weed Eaters and all and trimming and all, would that be, and maybe that's not the question to ask you, but would that be part of the kids, the people that we have hired for the summer employment? Not necessarily our youth program, but are these seasonal people that have been hired by, by the department?
I don't think so. I think.
These are regular employees?
Crew, they're pretty well full-time people.
Okay.
Now, there may be a mixture in there. There may be a mixture, but I'm pretty sure that most of them are full-time.
Yeah.
Because they run that one specific crew, and it's the same crew all the time.
I've seen them in several places over the past week.
But they work. They work.
Maybe if I'm not mistaken, they can just work like 1,500, 160 hours like a year. And some of those guys go through leaf season, pick up leaves also with them.
It's a mixture.
I did have a meeting today with the mayor about some grass cutting. We got some different departments that's cutting different grass in different places, and other people have to go back and weed eat, and he's going to try to look at that and see what we can do. But I think the mayor probably hit it on the head about the overgrown lots a while ago. We probably need to get more people, or split that contract or something, where we can have more people on the ground working in just that one contractor next year, and that way we get twice as much work done. I think that was a real good idea, Mayor.
It will be. It will be. We appreciate that.
I'll just be sure and up for it.
Yeah, we continue to have the same problem, you know, every summer, you know, we get behind, you know, we get behind every summer. So, I thank you, Mayor. Now, if you put more money in there, we'll hire more people, and we won't get behind, and it'll certainly do wonders for the city.
I'll entertain a motion, we're in general.
So will.